All right, we're at seven o'clock. We have one case here tonight. I'd like to welcome you to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. First, I have to give a public notice, and then I will tell you how we will proceed. In accordance with the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable on Facebook Live on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be able to be found on the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. The Lunenburg Zoning Board will hear the petition of Mark Burch, 20 Buttonwood Place, Lunenburg, Mass. The property, which is the subject of this case, is located at 18 Buttonwood Place and owned by Burch Living Trust.
Burch.
Ah, Burch, I'm sorry. The applicant is seeking a special permit for dimensional variation to vary the lot width requirement defined in Section 250-5.1B. The applicant is proposing to reconfigure the lot lines at 18 and 20 Buttonwood Place and to raise the existing dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling at 18 Buttonwood Place. The Zoning Board of Appeals would consider authorizing the special permit for dimensional regulation. The basis for the appeal special permit is found in Code of Lunenburg 250-5.1B. And with that, I'd like to introduce you to the board members. To my left is Lisa Normandin, the Board Secretary, Alfred Gravell, James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop.
No?
No, Hans.
I'm sorry, I'm reading right down my list. It's Tony Nacastro and Don Gurney.
I miss Patrick.
I miss Patrick.
You miss Patrick.
You got me all confused. The way it will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. Please come forward to the mic, give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions they might have on the application while you're at the mic. There will be a public comment period. If you would like to speak, please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and address all comments and questions to the board. Besides the regular findings on a special permit, this is a special permit to vary dimensional requirements, so the additional required findings are: The permit may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially degradating from the intent and purpose of the bylaw. The specific site is an appropriate location for such building alteration. The proposed building or alteration is compatible with the existing neighborhood with regard to size, location, and architecture. The granting of the special permit will not adversely affect the neighborhood. The granting of the special permit will not unreasonably diminish available light, air, sunlight, or other amenities, and there will be no nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. And with that, I would invite the petitioner.
Do you want me to read it?
Oh, absolutely. I'm sorry, I'm getting way ahead of myself tonight.
This is an application for a special permit, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Mark Burch, 20 Buttonwood Place in Lunenburg. Und signed hereby makes application as follows: A special permit to vary the lot width requirement defined in Section 250-5.1B. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg Zoning Bylaw, Section 250, 8.3b, 2d, and the basis for this appeal for variance concerns the following section of the Lunenburg Zoning Bylaw, 250-5.1B. The street address is 18 Buttonwood Place in Lunenburg, Assessors Map 93, Parcel 64. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land, which is the subject of this case, is the Burch Living Trust, 20 Buttonwood Place in Lunenburg, Massachusetts. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds, Book 10135, Page 3, and recorded October 8, 2021. They have no knowledge or prior appeal, application, or petition concerning the land or building involved in this case. The special permit questions and answers are as follows, and the petition was signed, the application was signed April 19, 2023 by Mark Burch of 20 Buttonwood Place in Lunenburg. Existing conditions: The subject property is located at 18 Buttonwood Place, which is shown on Assessors Map 93 as Parcel 64. The property has frontage on West Street with secondary access through Buttonwood Place right-of-away. The property contains approximately 0.71 acres of land and 25.48 feet of frontage, making a pre-existing non-conforming lot with respect to area and frontage. Additionally, 18 Buttonwood Place does not comply with the lot width through building requirement, which is 175 feet required, and there is 130.9 feet existing. The lot currently contains an existing residential dwelling, and it's located entirely within the Residence A zoning district. Proposed conditions: The applicant is proposing to reconfigure the lot line for 18 Buttonwood Place to bring the lot into conformance with the minimum lot area requirement and to provide adequate area for a proposed sewage disposal system. As a result of the property line reconfiguration, the existing dwelling on the abutting property, 20 Buttonwood Place, would be brought into conformance with side yard zoning setback. In addition to the lot line configuration, the applicant is proposing to raise the existing dwelling and construct a new single-family dwelling. 18 Buttonwood Place will have a lot width of 114 feet at the proposed dwelling, which does not conform to the 175-foot lot width requirement. As such, the applicant is seeking 61 feet of relief from the 175-foot lot width requirement. Special criteria: The questions and answers are as follows. A) Will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The reply: The proposed use of the property will be exactly the same as the existing use. As such, the proposed action will not be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous, as it will not add traffic and does not constitute a new danger of fire or explosion. B) Will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply: The proposed improvement, septic system installation, proposed dwelling, and property line reconfiguration will increase the assessed value of the property and also the market value of the property. As such, we expect the proposed project to have a positive effect on land values of the neighborhood. C) Will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightlines if in open use? The proposed use of the dwelling will remain unchanged. The proposed dwelling will be a single-family dwelling that fits in with the architectural characteristics of the neighborhood. D) Will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines and amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? The response: As mentioned, the proposed use will continue to be a single-family residence. The structure is being proposed in compliance with all zoning requirements except as noted and will not produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare that would be detrimental to the adjacent properties. There is a letter dated April 19, 2023 to the board. The purpose of this letter is to provide written authorization to allow staff from Dillison Roy Civil Design Group Incorporated to represent the proposed project at 18 Buttonwood Place, respectfully submitted, Mark Burch, owner and applicant. There is also a certified list of abutters. They were all notified two weeks prior to tonight. There is a copy of the deed dated October 8, 2021, a copy of the field card from the Assessors' office, and a plan submitted by Dillison Roy. I also received a memo from Health Agent James Griffey today. It says, "The Board of Health has witnessed soil testing on Lot 2, 20 Buttonwood Place for the designing replacement of the sewage disposal system for lots 1 and 2. The plan reviewed, ZBA permit plan, 18 Buttonwood Place, Job 6803, dated 4/25/23, represents a division of land in accordance with Title V, 310 CMR 15.010. Both lots involved with the division must comply with the requirements in this section of Title V prior to the Board of Health's ability to endorse a building permit for the proposed lot, proposed Lot 1." And that was a memo from James Griffey, Health Agent Neshoba, Board of Health. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
Okay, and with that, I would invite the applicant or his rep to address the issues.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Greg Roy with Dillison Roy Civil Design Group, and I am representing Mark Burch, who is also in attendance this evening. I'm trying to get this thing working. So, thank you, Lisa, again, for reading the application and the record that did list a summary of what we're looking to do, but I'll give you a little bit more, or talk about it in a little bit different manner, and point, as I do, to the site plan, so I'll try to, I'll try to juggle here as much as I can. So, today, if you can see this small-scale plan here, the hatched area is the existing lot configuration of 18 Buttonwood. So it has 30, just over 30,000, almost 31,000 square feet of land area, and has 25 feet of frontage, a little over 25 feet of frontage on West Street right here. You can see in this plan, the actual, the access to the property is through Buttonwood Place, which is a private, a private road that provides access to the property through this portion right here. But the legal frontage is off of West Street, 25 and change, 25 feet and change. The applicant is looking to reconstruct the structure on the property, and before we do that, of course, we need to, we needed to look at the septic system for that structure, and it became clear that we needed to design a new replacement septic system for that structure. When we did the soil testing, there's no suitable, we didn't find suitable soil on the actual lot, but we did find some just off the lot, right here in the green hatched area. These rectangular areas are the primary and reserve septic systems for 18 Buttonwood that we have designed, and it's part of the soil testing that Mr. Griffey referenced in his memo. So what we're intending to do in order to make that happen is to annex a piece of property from 20 Buttonwood, and we're calling that Parcel B, and deed that to Lot 1. So the net result of that would be to allow for adequate area for the septic system. It would also have the effect of increasing the lot area to 47,871 square feet of 18 Buttonwood Place, which would make that more compliant with respect to lot area. The requirements in the R1 zoning district is 40,000 square feet, so currently it doesn't comply with the lot area requirements. Adding that chunk of land will make that compliant with lot area. We, of course, are not proposing to change anything on the legal frontage; that will remain the same in both cases. As we were doing the surveying to, you know, to create this parcel, we indeed noticed that the existing house on 20 Buttonwood Place actually encroaches slightly, a little less than a foot, but encroaches slightly onto 18 Buttonwood Place. So we thought we had an opportunity to correct that problem. So what we're proposing is to deed this red trapezoid here, which has previously been with 18 Buttonwood. We would deed that to 20 Buttonwood, and it would effectively make this a conforming structure on the lot. So we would be increasing the distance between the existing structure to the lot line, an amount that would make it compliant with the current zoning setbacks. The effective result of that is to shrink the lot width through the building for 18 Buttonwood, 18 Buttonwood, which is why we're here this evening. So currently today, as Lisa read, there's 130 and change feet of lot width through the, through the existing building. Shifting that property line would result in a reduction of that to 114.8 feet. So we would not have, in either the existing or in the proposed lot line case, we would not have the required 175-foot of lot width through the building, which is why we're here this evening. We did talk this through, I did want to mention, we did talk this through with Casey before he departed. I was not able to get a written, written documentation from him before he left, but I did want to let you know that I did go through this whole analysis with him. Obviously, we would have preferred not to come before you board if there was a way he could have issued a building permit, but he, he thought that we needed to come here for that dimensional variation to get this cleaned up. So this is a little bit of a different case because it's a lot width dimensional variation. If you act favorably upon the application, we would then go to the planning board to put a plan of land on record, to have it endorsed by the planning board, to officially create the changes in the lot lines. But we didn't want to do that without first coming before your board. So I just wanted to make everybody aware of that process. There's still another, I guess, hurdle that we have to work through. Relative to Jim's, Mr. Griffey's comments, we're aware of that. We have done the soil testing out there, as he indicates, you know, for both 20 and 18 Buttonwood, so we're working through that process. So we, and I think that, as he suggested, that would really come into play prior to receipt of the building permit, if this was, if this was a successful appeal to your board. So I think, I'll leave it at that. I'm happy to take any questions that any of you folks may have.
I have a couple of questions. Okay, so Lot 2, as it currently is, has 4.33 acres and 100 feet of frontage.
Correct.
You want to reduce the lot to 3.89 acres?
That's correct.
And is there an actual entrance from West Street to that property?
Yes.
I mean, is there an actual drive?
To 20 feet?
Yeah.
Excuse me, to 20 Buttonwood?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, there is an entrance that comes through the frontage. I think it, I think there's also access from Buttonwood. Correct. I mean, you, there actually, there is an entrance to West Street as well, but there is not to 18, there is no access through there.
I was going to say, you have to come up to the mic, if you would, please. Give your name and address and say anything you would like.
Mark Burch, 20 Buttonwood Place. There is, there's a, we used to, when I was younger, we would drive, you could drive trucks right down it. Now it's more storage, it's not constant use, but there is a pathway that could be opened up for access.
Okay, right, I was going to say, right now, it's full of trees.
Yeah, yep.
Okay, all right. And that runs right between those storage huts, between you and the Bates property?
Between the Bates property and Lakeview nurseries.
Right.
Runs right down, right down between them. This is Lakeview nurseries right here. I used to use it as a shortcut to get home.
Okay. So the configuration of lot lines is to install a new septic system? Is that the main reason?
Yeah, I mean, he would like to, he would like to construct a new dwelling on the property, and to do that, we would need to upgrade the septic system, and we can't.
Go ahead.
Oh, it's all right, and so we can't do that. We can't, there's no area that we found on the, in the white space here that was suitable for a septic. We found some just off, so we're, that's the reason for annexing that green space into Lot 1.
Okay. So you're saying the entrance on 18 is from West Street?
That's the legal frontage, yep.
Going up Buttonwood Place, just because of something you said, do you have deeded access right-of-way?
I believe it's a, I've never read it in the deed. I believe it's definitely written as a utility right-of-way. Currently, Buttonwood Place is owned by 324 Electric Ave, property line-wise, and 16 Buttonwood Place, and the rest of it is owned all the way to 20 by myself with the 20, 20 Buttonwood Place lot.
Okay.
But there's, there has to be some sort of deeded access because there are landlocked homes on the street. There's the two homes on the other side, and 16 Buttonwood are, they don't have any frontage on West Street or Electric Ave.
Do you know if those first three homes have deeded rights? Do you have any idea?
I would, I would assume it's just always been that way.
It's just been that way.
Yeah, I know there's probably a utilisement, but I really haven't read the deeds to find out what the access is.
Okay, and on that property, 18, it's, right now, it's really a trailer with an addition on it, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, does anybody live there, or is that just a?
Yeah, it's currently.
It's currently being?
It's currently used as a rental. My intention's not to use it as a rental.
Okay.
My intention's to use it for family.
Okay, and I just have one more, then I'll open it up to the board. You had mentioned that you're going to change the lot line partly because Lot 20 encroaches on 18?
Correct.
Does that make the building that's there non-conforming?
This one?
No.
Or this one?
That one.
This one. So we have a problem with both the existing structure and the proposed one. So it, you know, if we were to do this, it creates a, it would create a problem with the existing structure as it stands today, as well as anything proposed. But we are proposing to put the new building in the same spot, so the lot width effectively would be the same.
The reason?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
No, that's fine.
No, I was going to say, the reason I'm asking is, under 250 7.2B, you can, if you demolish a non-conforming structure without permission from the Zoning Board of Appeals, then it becomes abandoned. So I think if you're telling me that that lot line was wrong, you just found that out, that it's not really a conforming building, it's a non-conforming? Is that correct? Or am I wrong on that?
Well, the existing property line hasn't, existing property line's been where it is for however long it's been in existence. I'm not sure that, you know, when it was created, but for, you know, for a long time. The existing structure on that property is today even measured to the edge of the existing property, if you look at this one, the hat, the edge of the hatched area, that width right there is only 130 feet. So you don't have the 175 feet today. So it would be considered a pre-existing.
Right, I know you don't have that.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, if we were to just go to the planning board and have this thing endorsed, yes, we'd have a problem with the current, with the existing structure right here, which is why we're here.
Right, right.
But we wanted, we don't want to, I guess, let me, let me just, we're here because that would create a problem with the existing structure, but we also don't want to hold, we don't want to, want to be transparent. We're proposing to put a new structure in that spot. So we're not, this isn't just to resolve an issue between the two existing buildings. It is that, but then we do intend to install a new structure in the same location as the existing.
Okay.
But it, the, if you grant the dimensional variation that we're requesting, that lot width would be the same for the new building. So it would, it would sort of.
Okay. I'm just bringing it up because while you're sitting here, if that's the case, and it is non-conforming, you want to raise the building, we could just use, clear that up tonight as well.
Re-
But you don't feel you have to.
Raising this one?
Yes.
Well, that is our intention, but I don't know if I'm following, I don't know if I'm following you. It's non-conforming today, but we would be making it non, more non-conforming.
Want to make it non-conforming.
We'd be making it more non-conforming. So I think we'd, we'd basically have sort of an infectious invalidity, invalidity thing that would happen if we were to do that. I'm not an attorney, but sometimes I play one. You know, you'd be, you'd be creating a more non-conforming situation, which would have a detrimental impact on the zoning compliance. So currently today, this structure, I think, is protected by pre-existing non-conforming status, grandfather, right? If we were to change this without coming before you and get some relief, then I think we'd lose that, right?
Right, right.
So I think that, yeah, that's why we're, that's why we're here. But we didn't want to be, we wanted to be transparent. We do intend to construct a new structure in the same location, but, you know, our argument would be that it's not going to be any, it's not, it's not going to be significantly different, other than it'll be a nice new, modern, modern structure.
Okay. With that, I'm going to open it up to the rest of the board.
Have you thought about switching instead of having it vertically, having it horizontally?
Well, it still would be, I would think it would still be non-conforming, even if you did it horizontally, because you still don't have the lot width through the structure, is my understanding, correct? Yeah. No matter how we do it horizontal or vertical. So I'm just trying to work with what I was, what I was dealt, dealt with here, and it, I-
But if you switch it to horizontally, you still, you gain the whole length of the two lots.
Like that?
Which makes it almost conforming.
So you're correct. I think you're talking, if we were to rotate this 90 degrees, and for the distance across the, you know, the front of the house would be, would be from here to here, that would definitely be greater than 175 feet. The trouble is, I think the way your zoning bylaw reads, it's-
It's not through the center of the house.
Yeah, it's, well, it relates, how you measure that relates to where the legal frontage is. So you'd be actually, you have to measure it on a line more or less parallel to the frontage, which is why we have the, it's hard to see, but you can see the orientation of West Street, and we actually drew in the lot width lines. They're parallel to the, to the West Street right-of-way. So you have to draw the, the way the bylaw defines lot width through the building is it's, it's parallel to the, to where your legal frontage is. So even if we were to rotate the house, we'd then have to draw, we'd have to take the front portion relative to the street, and we'd have to draw it, so it would be the same, it would be effectively the same. The bylaw doesn't allow us to tweak how we, we draw the, that lot width line.
Any other question?
No, that's it.
Patrick?
So I was over there yesterday, and so where there's like the private drive sign, that's all of 20, correct? Like that kind of, like that road is kind of 20?
Yeah.
Part of your-
So when you drive in Buttonwood Place, you drive between the Lakeview Plaza and that first house on the left actually has frontage on Electric Ave.
Okay.
As you're driving in, the fire hydrant is pretty much from, the fire hydrant to the end of the roadway there to my house, that's part of 20.
Okay.
And then the driveway for 18 is pretty much right on that corner between, it's right in that area where he's showing there. So you're, you-
Kind of come straight in, yeah.
Yeah, you kind of come straight in and then turn into that lot. That's just really, since it's been built, all, that's the access I've always known for.
Yeah, okay, okay. And you own both?
Yeah.
Lot, okay, right, right, okay. And so then 20 kind of becomes more correct, and 18 is still wrong, but it was wrong to begin with.
And it's gonna, yeah, it was wrong to begin with, and we, and we clean up, we clean up 20 and make it conforming. It becomes slightly more wrong with respect to lot width, but it becomes correct. We take it from non-conforming to conforming with respect to area, so it's a little bit of a-
We go from two wrong lots to one wrong lot.
Yeah. That's a good way to put it, yeah. That's a good way to put it.
Okay, gotcha, all right.
I'm good.
You're good?
What's the issue relating to the sewer septic system for Lot 2? This message from the Board of Health seems to indicate that when you do Lot 1 and put in the new septic system, it's, there's somehow an issue with the old septic system for Lot Number 2, and I, obviously, I don't know where that is.
Yeah, no, that's fine. So there's actually a couple of septic systems on that. There's, there's, man, I think I'd get this, there's one, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's one back in here and there's one down in here. Yeah. So there's two systems for this, this building. We've done testing up in this area, actually, it's probably over here, for a new system on this lot. So the regulation that Mr. Griffey's pointing out is a regulation in Title V that relates, that is triggered whenever there's what's called a division or an aggregation of a facility. The facility in Title V world is the real property and all the structures and improvements and septic systems on it. So whenever you effectively subdivide a piece of property, you have to do a Title V inspection on the existing system and make sure that there's a compliant pass- inspection on the existing system and make sure that there's a compliant, passing Title V system serving the, the property that you are subdividing from. So, when you, so basically, the, the regulation is to make sure that you're not giving away the only land area that you have available for the septic system. So, we've done the testing for that. We would just need to put a design plan on record for that, which we're aware of. As, as he indicated, it really doesn't come into play. I mean, it's, it's, it's a little bit of a different process from this board. We, of course, would need zoning relief to do this, which is why we're here. But we also need an A, you know, we need to do an A&R plan. We have to send the A&R plan and get that signed off from, from Jim and the Board of Health before we, before we do that, as part of that process as well. So, we know that that's a, that that needs to be done, and, and we've done the testing and the field work to support that.
And what's the square footage of the existing dwelling, which I think is a trailer that's been built on vis-à-vis the new structure?
500, your assessor's information listed as 520 square feet. So, that's all right?
Under measured.
Yeah.
And what's the square footage of the new structure?
It has not been designed yet because we are waiting to see if we could get the approval to do it. The intention is a ranch-style, single-level. You know, we, we would go over with the building inspector what we could do. I'm not looking to put a giant colonial. I know it wouldn't fit in that. The intention is to build a structure for, I'm not really looking for single-family use, I'm looking for over 65 living and, and ease of that. So, when I decide to downsize out of 20 Buttonwood, I have a, a spot that I can easily access and still stay in town.
And the existing Buttonwood Place is, the, the street is private, it's not maintained by the town?
No.
Okay.
I may, I plow it and maintain it and, and grade it and do all the work on it.
Any other questions? Okay. Just a couple more things, just in information, I was talking to the applicant. Water and sewer run up Route 13. And the first three homes, I believe, do they have water and sewer?
So, I currently have, Water District Water is on the whole street. Sewer runs to 324 Electric Ave, the Lakeview Plaza, up Buttonwood, and across the back of that property. Unfortunately, when they drew the sewer boundaries, 16 and, or 18 and 20 Buttonwood are not in the sewer district. And we've seen, we've seen unsuccessful attempts over the last several years of, of folks trying to petition the town meeting to expand the sewer district, and that hasn't really gone over too well. So, that's why we're looking at the septic system.
That's why you're putting in the septic systems.
Yep. We would love it if we could. It would be great if we could just tie in the sewer, but it's just not, it's not the district, unfortunately.
I hear you, okay. I don't think I have any more questions, no more questions from the board.
I don't have any more.
There are no more? I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the special permit for dimensional variation as requested for the change in the lot width requirements and so forth.
Okay. Just, just one more brief question while in between. The, the relief you're looking for is 60-something feet. Is that after that the boundary is reconfigured?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second?
A second?
We have a motion and a second? Call for a vote?
Aye.
Patrick?
Aye.
Tony?
Aye.
Don?
Aye.
And I say aye.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I do have post-decision instructions I have to read.
Okay.
The special permit is granted with the contingency that the petitioner complies with all licenses, regulations, statutes, ordinances of any and all applicable local, state, and federal boards or agencies with jurisdiction over the premises. The special permit is subject to a periodic review by the permit-granting authority or the enforcement officer to ensure compliance with the conditions. Noncompliance to such conditions may result in revocation of this permit. A copy of the board's decision shall be filed with the town clerk within 14 days. Any party agreed by the board's decision may appeal to Superior Court 20 days after the decision is filed with the town clerk. After certification by the town clerk, that 20 days have elapsed since the decision was filed, you should have it recorded in the registry of deeds. No special permit shall take effect until it has been recorded. Special permit shall lapse within two years unless substantial use or construction has commenced. And with that, we wish you good luck with your.
Thank you. So, I would, I would need to file that with the registry of deeds? Is that something I get from, from you?
Yeah, I'll prepare it, file it with the town clerk, and then.
Okay. And all the other stuff? That's why I hired Greg, because I don't know all of that other stuff. So, he's going to help me through the rest of the process. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Lisa will help you out.
I will help you.
Okay, so, would I come and see you eventually?
I will.
Or you mail something?
I prepare the decision.
Okay.
Signed by the chairman.
Okay.
And then it gets filed with the town clerk. I send you a copy.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
In 14 days.
Great, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Take care. Just to throw it out, I was monitoring Zoom, and I was the only one there, so, okay. There were no questions.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yes.
The public comment wasn't asked for because there's nobody from the public here. And there's no public on Zoom.
I don't have anything in writing, but for what it was worth, I did the neighborly thing. I did talk to all of my neighbors and, and asked any questions, and I did not get any negative responses from anybody on what I was trying to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You.
And with that, I think I'll ask a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Hey, thanks, thanks for being here, everybody.
Recording stopped.